Like to welcome everyone to the public hearing for fiscal year two thousand and twenty four, school budget adoption. And regular town council meeting, we are in council chambers, we also have people via Zoom. Could I please have a roll call?
President.
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
President. Here. Would I please have everybody uncover, stand with me and recite the pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. We stand on a nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mister manager, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No, sir.
Approval of the minutes, February ninth, two thousand and twenty three, on the regular meeting, could I have a motion? Motion made by Council Bragdon, seconded by Council Medor. Any discussion on the approval of the minutes, Council Dan?
Yeah, Mister Chairman, I just have, um, want to make note of one correction that's needed on page five. Under order number twenty seven, um, there's a number, it says, it should just be three hundred and fifty dollars, and there's a one stuck in front of the three, so. Um, there's three hundred and fifty dollars that was, went to, um, a donation, so.
That correction and reflection show that it should read three hundred and fifty dollars, do not one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, am I correct? Thank you. Um, all those in favor? Six zero unanimous. Special presentation. Council Higgins, can I please have you read order number one zero two dash two thousand and twenty three?
Yes, Mister Chair. Order number one zero two, two thousand and twenty three, providing for public hearing. Is ordered that Melonoke Town Council enter into public hearing to discuss the FY two thousand and twenty four school budget. Second.
Motion made by Council Higgins, seconded by Council of Bragden. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Six zero. And who would be doing the presentation tonight? Like to welcome Dr. Lane.
I wasn't, if I was sitting up front, or you're going through it today, or how we do this?
So I think the, the best way that we have found. Is just page by page, and as we move through it, then. We will ask for any discussion from the council, and then. We will, I will just direct you to move on if we're all set. If we have any questions or comments, then we will address them page by page.
Is what I mean by page?
You guys prepared?
No.
But I think so, I think he was talking about, but we already went through the.
Alright. First day for Council Medor. This is our most seasoned conference.
We know.
Oh, we know. Alright, Dr. Wayne.
Alright, so I'm, I'm not sure, um, counselor, if you're saying that we're going through the, um, order, the one oh three, are we starting there? I, I guess I'm not sure what you're asking me to do. Though the actual.
Yeah, we're gonna go through the budget page by page.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought that's what we did last time.
And. I don't think that we, I don't think it's appropriate that we need to go line by line, but if we go page by page, and if you just highlight the totals.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just didn't know that.
Nope, so, so what we'll do is the council will have a chance to discuss, then it'll go down to the public on each.
Okay.
On each page.
Okay, so you're not asking for all the like preliminary information that I provided last time as far as the things that affect the budget?
No.
Okay, alright.
Did that last?
Or whatever name and total.
Okay. Alright, okay. Alright, so then, starting from the beginning, um, superintendent's office. Yeah, two hundred and, um, forty eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety three, uh, forty nine.
Alright, now I'm on page one. I'm looking at the cover sheet.
I know, I hear ya.
Alright. Is the council good? Any discussion on page one? Anybody from the public? Discuss page one. Seeing none?
Okay, um, central office business, one hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and five dollars and forty eight cents. Do the whole page, okay, um, total school board is four hundred and fifty, two thousand, one hundred and ninety. Total system administration, eight hundred and thirty nine thousand, eighty eight dollars and ninety seven cents.
Any council discussion? Down to the public? Also seeing none, please move forward.
Alright, um, total granite street principal, um, one hundred and fifty eight thousand, five forty five, fifty two.
Council discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, was that on that page? Uh, down to the public? Seeing none, please move forward.
Okay, total sterns, principal office, three hundred and two thousand, two twenty seven and five cents. Total school administration is four sixty, seven seventy two, fifty seven.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, down to the public? Also seeing none, please move forward.
Total pre K instruction, six oh nine, six sixty one oh four. Continuing on with total three, five instruction is six nineteen, seven eighty eight, seventy seven.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, down to the public? Also seeing none, please move forward.
Total six eight instruction for fifty, four fifty seven, eight oh three, forty six. Total nine twelve instruction, seven, seven, seven sixty seven, nine sixty five, ninety three. Total gifted and talented pre K to eight, fifty nine thousand, six oh five, zero nine.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, down to the public? Also seeing none, please move forward.
Total gifted and talented, five twelve, thirty one thousand, three dollars and eighty nine cents. Total ESL nine twelve, fifteen thousand, eight forty seven, eighty five. Total regular instruction, two million, five sixty one, six seventy six and three cents.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, down to the public? Also seeing none, please move forward.
Total special services office, fifty nine, eight fifty one. Total K eight special education resource room, four forty three, two eighteen and one cent.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, also down to the public? Seeing none, please move forward.
Total K eight, um, special ed self-contained. Four hundred and twenty six thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars and twenty cents. Total K eight special ed speech and language, seventy six thousand, two hundred and forty seven dollars and twenty cents.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, down to the public? Also seeing none, please move forward.
Total K eight special education homebound and hospital, three thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. Total K eight special education other services, seventy nine thousand, three hundred and ninety one dollars. And total nine twelve special ed resource room, one hundred and sixty four thousand, three hundred and seventy seven dollars and twenty cents.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, down to the public? Also seeing none, please move forward.
Nine twelve special education self-contained is a hundred and sixty six thousand, five hundred and twenty four dollars and ninety four cents. Total nine twelve special education homebound hospital, two thousand, thirty eight dollars.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, down to the public? Also seeing none, please move forward.
Total nine twelve special ed speech and language, thirty two thousand, seventy four dollars and fifty eight cents. Nine twelve special education after school, two thousand, two hundred and eighty four dollars. Total nine twelve special ed other services, sixty five thousand, five hundred dollars. Total special education K twelve, one million, five hundred and twenty one thousand, nine ninety six, thirteen. Total, um, K twelve guidance, seventy one thousand, one hundred dollars and twenty five cents.
Council discussion? Seeing none, down to the public? Also seeing none, please move forward.
Nine twelve guidance, one hundred and five thousand, three hundred and twenty four dollars and fifty nine cents. Total health services, seventy seven thousand, one hundred and twenty six dollars and, and five cents.
Council discussion? Seeing none, down to the public? Also seeing none, please move forward.
Total technology K five, twenty seven thousand, three hundred and seventy eight dollars. Total technology six eight, sixteen thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars.
And council discussion? Seeing none, down to the public? Also seeing none, please move forward.
Total technology nine twelve, one hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty eight dollars and twenty eight cents. Total student support services, four hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and seventy four dollars and seven seventeen cents. K five library, thirty one thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety three cents. K eight, eight library, three, oh, six eight, sorry, six eight library, three thousand, one hundred and ninety three dollars.
Council discussion? Seeing none, down to the public? Also seeing none, please move forward.
Nine twelve libraries, thirty thousand, forty one dollars and nineteen cents. Total staff support services, sixty four thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars and twelve cents. Six eight extracurricular athletics, sixty six thousand, six hundred and twenty eight dollars.
Council discussion? Seeing none, down to the public? Also seeing none, please move forward.
Six eight co-curricular activities, seventeen thousand, two hundred and ninety two dollars. Total nine twelve extracurricular athletics, one hundred and eighty two thousand, three hundred and eighty four dollars and ninety five cents.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, down to the public? Also seeing none, please move forward.
Nine twelve co-curricular activities, seventy two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Total other instruction, three hundred and thirty nine thousand, fifty four dollars and ninety five cents. Total maintenance of plant, seventy four thousand, four hundred and thirty seven dollars and four cents.
Council discussion? Seeing none, down to the public? Also seeing none, please move forward.
Total operation of plant elementary, four hundred and thirty five thousand, five hundred and sixty two dollars and thirteen cents.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, down to the public? Also seeing none? Please move forward.
Total operation of plant secondary, seven hundred and fifty four thousand, eighteen dollars and ten cents. Total facilities management, maintenance, excuse me, one million, two hundred and sixty four thousand, seventeen dollars and twenty seven cents. Total career and technical education, twenty eight thousand, eight hundred and three dollars. Total debt service, ninety seven thousand, two hundred and eight dollars. Total transportation, two hundred and eighty five thousand, three hundred and two dollars. Total other appropriation, seventeen thousand, eight hundred, eleven dollars and ninety cents.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, down to the public? Also seeing none, please move forward.
Taking us to a grand total of seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety eight dollars, two hundred and fifty five and eleven cents. Pardon me?
Million.
I'm seven, yes, yeah. That was a test, you all passed. While I was reading through this, I was thinking of our elementary classrooms where they, the teacher calls on you, and it's your turn to read the number. And I'm thinking, this is the exercise.
You do have a whiteboard. Alright, so the record reflect that the, um, all joking aside, it was seven million, eight hundred and ninety eight thousand, two hundred and fifty five dollars and eleven cents.
Correct, I'm, my apologies.
Any council discussion? Seeing that, down to the public? Also seeing none. Alright. Thank you for that presentation.
Michael.
Now, we're gonna go through a series of orders. Thank you, Madam Clerk, we are out of public here. Yeah, that was pretty painless, right?
Now that I understand what to do, I'll be better next year.
Alright, order number one oh three dash two thousand and twenty three, Council Higgins, would you please read?
Thank you, Mister Chair, order number one oh three, two thousand and twenty three, provide for appropriation of system administration, school. Is ordered that eight hundred and thirty nine thousand, eighty, eighty eight dollars and ninety seven cents is hereby raised and appropriate for school system administration. For fiscal twenty twenty four, recommend eight hundred thousand, eight hundred and thirty nine thousand, eighty eight dollars and ninety.
Second. Motion made by Council Higgins, seconded by Council of Medor. Council discussion on this order? Seeing none, down to the public? Also seeing none, back to the council, all those in favor? Six zero. Council Medor, would you please read order number one oh four dash two thousand and twenty three?
Thank you, Mister Chairman, order number one oh four dash two thousand and twenty three, providing for appropriation for school administration, is ordered that four hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and seventy two dollars and fifty seven cents. Is hereby raised and appropriated for school administration for fiscal twenty twenty four, recommended four hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and seventy two dollars and fifty seven cents.
Motion made by Council Medor, seconded by Council of Bragden. Any council discussion on the order? Seeing none, down to the public? Also seeing none, back to the council, all those in favor? Six zero. Order number one oh five dash two thousand and twenty three, Council Bragden, would you please read?
Order number one oh five, two thousand and twenty three, providing for appropriation for regular instruction, it is ordered that two million, five hundred and sixty one thousand, six hundred and seventy six dollars and three cents is hereby raised and appropriated for regular instruction for fiscal year two, twenty twenty four. Recommended two million, five hundred and sixty one thousand, six hundred and seventy six dollars and three cents.
Second. Motion made by Council Bragden, seconded by Council Medor, council discussion on the order? Seeing none, down to the public? Also seeing none, back to the council, all those in favor? Six zero. Order number one oh six dash two thousand and twenty three, Council Pelletier, would you please read?
Order one oh six dash twenty twenty three, providing for appropriation for special education. It is ordered that one million, five hundred and twenty one thousand, nine hundred and six, ninety six dollars and thirteen cents. Is hereby raised and appropriated for special education, fiscal twenty four. Recommended one million, five hundred and twenty one thousand, nine hundred and ninety six dollars and thirteen cents.
Motion made by Council Pelletier, seconded by Council Higgins, council discussion on the order? Seeing none, down to the public? Also seeing none, back to the council, all those in favor? Six zero. Order number one oh seven dash two thousand and twenty three, Council Higgins, would you please read?
Yes, order number one oh seven, two thousand and twenty three, providing for appropriation of student and staff support. Is ordered that four hundred and eighty two thousand, five hundred and twenty four dollars and twenty nine cents is hereby raised and appropriated. For student staff support for fiscal twenty twenty four, recommended four hundred and eighty two thousand, five twenty, five hundred and twenty four dollars and twenty nine cents.
Second. Motion made by Council Higgins, seconded by Council Medor. Council discussion on the order? Seeing none, down to the public? Also seeing none, back to the council, all those? In favor? Six zero.
Nice one.
I'm gonna say opposed one of these times, you guys are just gonna be. Alright, order number one oh eight dash two thousand and twenty three, oh, Council Dan, let's go ahead.
Order number one oh eight dash two thousand and twenty three, providing for appropriation for other instruction, it is ordered that three hundred and thirty nine thousand, fifty four dollars and ninety five cents is hereby raised and appropriated. For other instruction for fiscal twenty twenty four, recommended three hundred and thirty nine thousand, fifty four dollars and ninety five cents.
Second. Motion made by Council Danforth, seconded by Council Bragden. Council discussion on the order? Seeing none, down to the public? Also seeing none, back to the council, all those in favor? Six zero. Order number one oh nine dash two thousand and twenty three, Council Medor, would you please read?
Thank you, Mister Chairman, order one oh nine dash two thousand and twenty three, providing for appropriation for career and technical education. It is ordered that twenty eight thousand, eight hundred and three dollars hereby raised and appropriated for career and technical education for fiscal twenty twenty four. Recommended twenty eight thousand, eight hundred and three dollars.
Motion made by Council Medor, seconded by Council Higgins, council discussion on the order? Seeing none, down to the public? Also seeing none, back to the council, all those in favor? Six zero. Order number one ten dash two thousand and twenty three, Council Bragden, would you please read?
Order number one ten, two thousand and twenty three, providing for appropriation for facilities maintenance, maintenance. It is ordered that one million, two hundred and sixty four thousand, seventeen dollars and twenty seven cents is hereby raised and appropriated for facility maintenance. For fiscal year twenty twenty four, recommended one million, two hundred and sixty four thousand, seventeen dollars and twenty seven cents.
Second. Motion made by Council Bragden, seconded by Council Medor, any council discussion on the order? Seeing none, down to the public? Also seeing none, back to the council, all those in favor? Six zero. Order number one eleven dash two thousand and twenty three, Council Pelletier, would you please read?
Order number one eleven dash two thousand and twenty three, providing for appropriation of transportation and buses. Is ordered that two hundred and eighty five thousand, three hundred and two dollars is hereby raised and appropriated for transportation and buses for fiscal twenty twenty four. Recommended twenty eight five thousand, three hundred and two.
Second. Motion made by Council Pelletier, seconded by Council Medor, council discussion on the order? Seeing none, down to the public? Also seeing none, back to the council, all those in favor? All those opposed, all those abstaining? Five zero one. Order number one twelve dash two thousand and twenty three, Council Higgins, would you please read?
Order one twelve, two thousand and twenty three, provide for appropriation for debit services and other commitments, it is ordered that ninety seven thousand, two hundred and eight dollars is hereby raised. And appropriated for debit services and other commitments for fiscal twenty twenty four, recommended ninety seven thousand, two hundred and eight dollars.
Motion made by Council Higgins, seconded by Council Bragden. Council discussion on the order? Seeing none, down to the public? Also seeing none, back to the council, all those in favor? Six zero. Order number one thirteen dash two thousand and twenty three, Council Danforth, would you please read?
Yes, order number one thirteen dash two thousand and twenty three, providing for appropriation for all other expenditures, it is ordered that seventeen thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars and ninety cents. Is hereby raised and appropriate for all other expenditures for fiscal twenty twenty four, recommended seventeen thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars and ninety cents.
Second. Motion made by Council Danforth, seconded by Council Medor, council discussion on the order? Seeing none, down to the public? Also seeing none, back to the council, all those in favor? Six zero. Order number one fourteen dash two thousand and twenty three, Council Medor, would you please read?
Thank you, Mister Chairman, order number one fourteen dash two thousand and twenty three, providing for appropriation for the total cost of funding public education. It is ordered that five million, eighty thousand, three hundred and sixty one dollars and forty four cents hereby appropriated. For the total cost of funding public education for pre K kindergarten to grade twelve, as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act. And that one million, two hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and ninety eight dollars and sixty seven cents. Be raised as the municipality's contribution to the total cost of funding public education. From pre K kindergarten to grade twelve, as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act, in accordance with the main revised statutes title twenty dash A. Section one, five, six, eight, eight, the school committee recommends one million, two hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and ninety eight dollars and sixty seven cents. Explanation, the municipality's contribution to the total cost of funding public education for pre K kindergarten. To grade twelve, as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act, the amount of money. Determined by state law to be the minimum amount that a municipality must raise in order to receive the full amount from state, of state debt.
Thank you. Motion made by Council Medor, seconded by Council Danforth. Any council discussion? Seeing none, down to the public? Also seeing none, back to the council, all those in favor? Six zero. Order number one fifteen dash two thousand and twenty three, Council Bragden, would you please read?
Order number one fifteen dash two thousand and twenty three, providing for appropriation for debt services, it is ordered that ninety seven thousand, two hundred and eight dollars and zero cents. Be raised and appropriated for the annual payments on debt services previously approved by the municipality's legislative body for non-state funded school construction projects on state funded portions of school construction projects and minor capital projects in addition to the fund and funds. Appropriated as the local share of the municipality's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre kindergarten to grade twelve. School committee recommends ninety seven thousand, two hundred and eight dollars and zero cents, explanation. Non-state funded debt services is the amount of money needed for the annual payments on the municipality's long-term debt for major capital. School construction program, program, projects that are not approved for state subsidy, the bonding of this long-term debt was previously approved by the voters or other legislative body.
Second. Motion made by Council Bragden, seconded by Council Medor? Any council discussion on the order? Seeing none, down to the public? Also seeing none, back to the council, all those in favor? Six zero. Order number one sixteen dash two thousand and twenty three, Council Pelletier, would you please read?
I believe that's one sixty.
One sixteen dash two thousand and twenty three.
Article for additional local funds requires approval by a majority of the entire school committee, and approval by majority for the entire council membership. Order number one sixteen, twenty twenty three, providing for appropriation of additional local funds. It is ordered that one million, eight hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and seven dollars, fifteen cents. Be raised and appropriated in additional local funds which exceeds state's essential programs, services allocation model. By two hundred and seventy thousand, hundred and twelve dollars, fifteen cents as required to fund the budget recommended by the school committee. School committee recommends one million, eight hundred and seventeen dollars, eight, excuse me, one million, eight hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and seven dollars, fifteen cents for additional local funds. And gives the following reasons for exceeding the state's essential programs and services funding model by two hundred and seventy thousand, hundred and twelve dollars, fifteen cents. EPS formula does not reflect the actual cost of funding education in rural areas where education may cost more. Because of its smaller size as compared to larger city schools, therefore, and these will provide revenues to fully fund programs and operate schools as well as. Contactual obligations areas excluded under EPS, such as five oh four program, extra and co-curricular activity, capital improvements, et cetera. Explanation, additional local funds are those locally raised funds over and above the town's local contribution to the total cost. Funding public education from pre kindergarten to grade twelve is described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act. And local amounts raised. And local amounts raised for the annual payment of non-state debt service. That will help achieve the town's budget for educational programs.
Motion made by Council Pelletier, seconded by Council Higgins, council discussion on the order. Seeing none down to the public. Also seeing none back to the council, all those in favor? Six zero. Order number one seventeen dash twenty twenty three, Council Higgins, would you please read?
Order number one seventeen twenty twenty three, provide for appropriation of total cost of funding public education, it is ordered that the school committee be authorized to. Spend seven million eight hundred ninety eight thousand two hundred fifty five dollars and eleven cents. For the physical year beginning one July first twenty twenty three and ending June thirtieth twenty twenty four. From the municipality's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve is described. In the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act. Non-state funded school construction projects, additional local funds for school purposes. Under the main revised statutes title twenty dash A. Section fifteen sixty nine zero unexpected and expended. Balances, tuition receipts, state subsidy and other receipts for support of schools. The school committee recommends seven million eight hundred ninety eight thousand two hundred fifty five dollars and eleven cents.
Second.
Motion made by Council Higgins, seconded by Council Madore, I just wanna point a clarification that the. You did say fiscal, right, not physical? You meant fiscal, right? So, the record reflected he said fiscal. Council discussion. None down to the public. Also seeing none back to the council, all those in favor? Six zero. Order number one eighteen dash twenty twenty three, Council Danforth, would you please read?
Order number one one eighteen dash twenty twenty three, providing for additional local dollars in support of the food services program. It is ordered that the municipality district unit will raise and to appropriate fifteen thousand an additional local dollars to support of the local food service program. The school committee recommends fifteen thousand.
Motion made by Council Danforth, seconded by Councilor Bragden. Council discussion on the order. Seeing none down to the public. Also seeing none back to the council, all those in favor? Six zero. Order number one nineteen dash twenty twenty three, Council Madore, would you please read?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, order one nineteen dash twenty twenty three, providing for adult education. It is ordered that three thousand two hundred and five dollars and thirty four cents be appropriated. For adult education and that two hun- two thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars and ninety cents be raised as a local share. With authorization to expend any additional incidental or miscellaneous receipts in the interest and for the well-being of the adult education program. Who committee recommends a yes vote.
Second. Motion made by Council Madore, seconded by Council Bragden. Council discussion on the order. Seeing none down to the public. Also saying none back to the council, all those in favor? Six zero. Order number one twenty dash twenty twenty three, Council Bragden, would you please read?
Order number one twenty dash twenty twenty three, providing for regional vocational operating budget. Is ordered that regional vocational operating budget as approved by the cooperative for a period of July first twenty twenty three. Two thirty and twenty four, leaving the amount of two million one hundred nine thousand eight hundred eighty dollars. Millenarch's share is twenty eight thousand eight hundred fifty dollars. With all that included, we can spend any additional incidental or miscellaneous receipts in the interest well-being of location.
Second.
Motion made by Council Bragden, seconded by Council Madore, council discussion on the order. Seeing none down to the public. Also seeing none back to the council, all those in favor? Six zero. Order number one twenty one dash twenty twenty three, Council Pelletier, would you please read?
Order number one twenty. One dash twenty twenty three, providing for so vocational adult education operating. It is ordered that, you know, the no adult operating education operating. But as approved by the cooperative board for the period July one twenty twenty three, thirty of twenty twenty four. Be approved in the amount of forty seven thousand nine hundred dollars, Millenarch's share is thousand eight hundred eleven dollars and ninety cents. With authorization to expend any additional incidental or miscellaneous receipts in the interest and well-being of the adult education program. School committee recommends a yes vote.
Motion made by Council Pelletier, seconded by Council Higgins. Council discussion on the order. Seeing none down to the public. Also seeing none back to the council, all those in favor? Six zero. Order number one twenty two dash twenty twenty three, Council Higgins, would you please read?
Order one twenty two twenty twenty three, provide for the acceptance of the state, federal or other sources of funds. Is ordered the town of Millenarch Town Treasurer is authorized to accept and expend grants. Including carryover amounts from the state, federal or other sources for the interests of education for fiscal twenty twenty four. Special dedicated revenue budget amounts to be in addition to the amounts appropriated. And raised in the general budget, seven million eight hundred ninety eight thousand two hundred fifty five dollars and eleven cents. And clearing account budget. Amount unknown to be estimated to be. Sources include. Title one A. Title two A. Title five. Tier three. Total entitlement and others. Some of these monies are now included in the new EPS funding model adopted in twenty. Five, two thousand five, by main state legislature legislature, school committee recommends a yes vote.
Second for the purpose of discussion.
Thank you, Council Bragden, seconded, motion made by Council Higgins. Council discussion on the order.
Mr. Chairman.
Council Madore.
Obviously, there is a blank in this order, uh, that blank, the number that should be filling that. I'm. Wondering, does the school have that number?
There is a number, I'm not sure why you don't have it on yours, it's two million.
Mr. Chairman.
Council Madore.
I would like to table this order. Uh, until our next, uh. Meeting. If I could, please.
Is there a second? Motion to table with a second. Council discussion on the table. No, we just go on to, go on to the vote. All those in favor? Three, four, all those opposed? Order two. Motion passes. Order number one twenty four dash twenty twenty three. Dash twenty twenty. Oh, wait a minute. I missed one.
Be twenty three.
Yep. Order number one twenty three dash twenty twenty three. Councilor Danforth, would you please read?
So we have some blank spaces in this order as well, do we know the total amount?
We do, I'm not sure why yours are blank. Um, do you want to tell you what they are?
Yes.
So it's, the first blank is on two million. And the second blank is three hundred and forty six thousand six twenty eight. Three forty six, six twenty eight.
So I could, uh, Mr. Manager, can you help me out here, uh? As far as this particular order, um, what we're, because of what was already tabled, we're not talking about, we're not adding the special revenue. Budget. I need some clarity.
That's now become over my head. I don't, I don't understand why it was tabled and can't discuss it now that it's taken.
Chairman. Unless somebody from the providing, I mean presiding.
The, the. Somebody from myself would. Side that is majority, last to present.
Correct.
I am sending my. Recommendation table.
Do that, have a second.
And, oh, has to, has to reckon, yeah, the person second has also.
I'll rescind it, second. You have to do something as well.
Whoever, whoever run.
I rescind.
Yep. Good. So now we can go back to.
Go back to.
One twenty two and.
All right, now we're back to. Order number one twenty two dash twenty twenty three. Do we need to reread it right from the beginning?
It, it should, it, it's. It should be readdressed because the number has to be filled in.
And that number is two million? It should be on that blank?
Correct.
And it's original.
Yes.
In its original form.
Thank you, Council Higgins, would you please reread order number one twenty two dash twenty twenty three?
Motion to skip the reading.
All those in favor?
Just the number, are we voting on the two million?
That motion is skip the reading.
Skip the reading.
Yep.
But it can be amended.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would like to amend order, uh.
We're gonna vote on the skipping of the reading, all those in favor? Skip the reading.
Okay, I'd like to amend the order one twenty two dash twenty twenty three. Uh, and take the estimated amount to be. Nine hundred sixty nine thousand one hundred fifty four dollar.
Nine hundred sixty nine thousand.
One fifty four.
One fifty four.
Second.
Thank you, so motion to amend by Council Madore, seconded by Council Pelletier. On the amendment, council discussions. Seeing none down to the public. Also seeing none, back to the council, voting on the amendment. All those in favor? Six zero. The order as amended, order number one twenty two dash twenty twenty three, Council Higgins, would you please read?
We're reading that, the order as amended.
Reread it with the amended number.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Order one twenty two twenty twenty three, providing acceptance of the state, federal or other sources of funds. Is ordered that the town of Millenarch at Town Treasurer is authorized to accept and expend grants including carryover amounts from the state, federal or other sources for the interest of education fiscal. Twenty twenty four, special dedicated revenue budget amounts to be in addition to the amounts appropriated. And raised in general bu- general budget, seven million eight hundred ninety eight thousand two hundred fifty five dollars and eleven cents. And the clearing account budget. Amount unknown to be estimated to be. Nine hundred sixty nine thousand one hundred and fifty four dollars. Sources include title one A, title two A, title five. Title, sorry, tier three, local entitlement and others. Some of these monies are now included in the new EPS funding mono. Model adopted in two thousand and five by main state legislature, school committee recommends a yes vote.
Second.
Motion made by Council Higgins, seconded by Council Madore. Council discussion on the amended order.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna make note, um, my understanding that the amount that was pulled from that total was the S R funds. Is that correct?
That's the one million. That's what we were just discussing.
Yes.
Okay.
So that we can have a discussion about that.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Any other council discussion? Seeing none down to the public. Also seeing none back to the council, all those in favor? Six zero. Thank you for the patience of that. It's gonna be, yes, so. Order number one twenty three. Twenty twenty three, Council Danforth, would you please read?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, order number one twenty three dash twenty twenty three, providing for acceptance of enterprise and agency funds. It is ordered that the town of Millenarch at Treasurer is authorized to accept and expend enterprise and agency funds included any carryover funds on behalf of the following. With any amounts to be expended in the clearing account. Budget in addition to amounts appropriated and raised for the general education budget of seven million eight hundred ninety eight dollars, two hundred fif- two hundred fifty five dollars and eleven cents. And the special revenue budget. Nine hundred and sixty nine thousand one hundred and fifty four. Amount unknown but estimated to be three hundred and forty six thousand six hundred and twenty eight. Sources include Millenarch at School Lunch Program and any others. Sources in. Exclude the international program which is approved under a separate order. Some of these monies are now included in the new EPS funding model adopted in two thousand and five by the main state legislature. The school committee recommends a yes vote. Be it ordered that in addition to the amount approved for the total. The total school budget next fiscal year. The school committee is authorized to expend such other sums as may be received from federal estate grants or programs or other sources during the fiscal year for the school purposes included the foreign student tuition program. And dual diploma program, provided that such grants, programs or other sources do not require the expenditure of other funds not previously appropriated.
Second.
Motion made by Council Danforth, seconded by Council Madore, council discussion on the order. Seeing none down to the public.
Nine thousand dollars includes the international program. So I think if we revise that order to say that it includes the international program. That would fix that problem.
Looking for a motion?
I know, but it's. It includes the nine hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars, I believe includes the international program. So I think that order just is revised to say includes. Plus, I mean, you do have the other order as well, which is fine.
Okay. Uh, looking for a motion to amend?
So I would make the motion that we amend the order, um, to use the word includes instead of excludes.
Second. Motion made by Council Danforth, seconded by Council Bragden, council discussion. Standing public. Seeing none back to the council on the amendment. All those in favor? Six zero. Back to the order itself, the amended order, number one twenty three dash twenty twenty three, Council Danforth. Unless somebody requests for.
Motion to skip the reading.
Yes.
Thank you, all those in favor? Thank you. Council discussion on the amended order. Seeing none down to the public. Also seeing none back to the council, all those in favor? Six zero.
Alrighty.
Once again, thank you briefly. Order number one forty one. Dash twenty twenty three. Am I ready on that?
Yes, you are.
Okay. Order number one forty one dash twenty twenty three, Council Madore, would you please read?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, order one forty one dash twenty twenty three, providing for F Y twenty four international program budget. It is ordered the international program revenue budget of. And if I'm reading this correctly. One hundred and seventeen thousand six hundred and sixty eight dollars. Uh, and expense budget. Of.
The same.
Same, one seventeen, six sixty eight. Six eighty eight, six sixty eight, sorry, yes. Be approved, and is further ordered that any funds balance, fund balance will transfer to the school's operating budget at the end of the fiscal year and is further ordered. This town of Millenarch at Town Treasurer is authorized to accept and expend fund. Related to the approved international program budget to the extent that the funds be available by September first, thousand twenty three. And throughout F Y twenty. Related to the approved international program budget, to the extent that the funds be available by September first, thousand twenty-three, and throughout F Y twenty-four to cover the program. Ben.
Second.
Motion made by Council Madore, seconded by Council Bragdon, council discussion on this order. Council discussion. Down to the public. Also seeing none, back to the councils. All those in favor? Six zero. Order number. Oh, actually. That includes. Our. Budgeting portion of this meeting. Thank you, everybody in attendance. Uh, we'll take a ten-minute recess. And, uh, we convene at six thirty.
Give you your order back. Oh, yeah.
Alright. Let me know when we're live. Good? Thank you, everybody, for who is still in attendance. We are in regular town council meeting. Starting with new business.
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
Um, just pointing out our online policy, everybody has to have a first and a last name. There is somebody who is currently viewing that does not have a last name listed.
Thank you, Council Bragdon. The person with the name of Josh on Zoom, could you please provide a last name? To your. Screen name, and, uh, we can keep you on. If not, per policy, we're going to have to, uh, boot you from the room. Did he just get booted, or did he remove himself? Alright, so moving forward. Uh, we're gonna move on to the manager's report. The. Superbly defined manager's report.
What a linguistic adventure, sir.
With my cornucopia of my vocabulary, sure. Please proceed.
It's a real plethora. Full. Uh. Real avid and costello. He, so, thank you, Chairman.
That joke to me?
You. Oh, you are the one that is taller and. Visibly sleek. Uh, so I have just a few things to, um, update on this evening. The. Uh, municipal building roof repair, which is. Uh. Been in contact with the contractor that we, um, hired this past winter, name is. Bradley Haas from Anell Brothers. I may have butchered the pronunciations on both of those last names. But they are. Expected to start later this month on that repair, uh. As a reminder, we had allocated nine hundred, uh, nine thousand two hundred seventy-five dollars from our American Rescue Plan Act funding. Uh, towards this much-needed repair of the roof sections being repaired would be over the elevator entrance, uh, which has been leaking. Quite some time. And the, uh, front awning here on the front of the municipal building. Um, as I said, that work should, uh, begin later this month. Very much looking forward to that being done. Quite a, quite an eyesore in several places there, as well as some, some, some. Water leakage into, um, electrical areas, so very much looking forward to having that repaired. Um, I was able to submit my first manager's column to newspaper. I'm told it's in there this week. Plan is to continue doing so, uh, monthly and, uh. And, 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 you know, we'll be speaking about our ongoing efforts in the town, um, town's operation. Important updates for community members to know about, uh, and hopefully dispel a few of these wonderful rumors along the way. Information directly from the source. I'd actually felt great to, uh, have freed up my workload, uh, well enough to, to make room for that. It's been on my whiteboard for quite some time. Um, I'm very happy to have that. Uh, we recently have had some work going on. To remove dead and potentially hazardous trees along hillside between Highland Avenue and Penobscot Avenue. Um, I compare this to finding one ant and. Finding many other ants, um. We will continue to investigate that stretch of hill, uh, for additional dead or potentially hazardous trees. Um, that would need to be removed, and we'll plan to bring, um, a recommendation. To the council to consider at an upcoming meeting. Um, this is really just a, one of those matter-of-time scenarios. These trees have grown there for a very long time. Really never been any ongoing maintenance, um, and, you know, they are, they are, uh, either infested or dying or, or. You know, potentially hazardous with, you know, upcoming storms and of that nature. Um, so this really serves as a heads up that, that we will be occurring that expense in the near future. We're fortunate. Yet unfortunate, um, to have saved quite a bit of money through our maintenance line and public works over the course of the year without having a house. A mechanic for a stretch of that time. Uh, so we were able to cover the cost of what was, uh, the most urgent need, uh, so. We are good to go there and we'll be bringing a plan forward, uh, pretty soon. I wanted to back up just a moment. I just realized I left out a, what I think is a pretty important. Mention in the, uh, roof repair section. Related yet, um, unrelated to the roof repair, we actually have a plan put together for Public Works to come down. Um, and repair the stucco that has been falling apart and, you know. Uh, on the front entrance of our building, so they'll be repairing, repairing and repainting that stucco, uh, and we really. Feel there's, there's, it's great to continue that effort to increase the curb appeal of our office. And take pride in how that, how that looks on our main street, so very excited to see that continue as well. Jumping ahead, uh, we continue to make improvements on our dog park, uh. We recently had Public Works over there, they assisted by installing the pet waste receptacle, uh, complete with the bag dispenser. They installed a grate into the, uh, uh, that'll be blocking the access to the drainage culvert there. We had some. Concern raised by citizens about small dogs. Being able to travel through that culvert and into the river, uh, so we were able to, um. Call the Public Works crew to action and they installed a grate there that'll allow the water access, uh, but not the dog access. So we appreciate that for them. Uh, we do have a couple of small fence repairs to be made, um, on the older section of fence and then uh, in the next week or so, we expect to have the permanent four by eight, uh, rules signage installed over there. Uh, Jeff Campbell and I will be tackling the lettering of that sign next couple of days. Really looking forward to having that, that fancy new sign over there. It's gonna really pull it all together. Uh, we'll be planning a, a date near future to gather some volunteers to go over and have a little raking party. Um, I've had some, uh, communication from other community members that are very excited to have that as a resource in our town and have offered to help already without me even, um, putting the ask out. So I'm excited to get over there and, and, uh, clean up the rest of that land. And once we're all said and done, we'll be having a little grand opening party over there, inviting the community and their pups to come celebrate. Uh, it'll be a wonderful time. Uh, we do expect the, uh, new draft of short-term rental ordinance, uh, to be coming in the very near future. We are, um, that process had been completed by the, um, Economic Development and Sustainability Committee. We are awaiting the final draft. That was the outcome of that series of meetings. Um, as soon as that's presented to us, uh, we will bring it to the planning board and the council to go through, um, the vetting process and, and hopefully pass that ordinance. We are moving into the summer season in town. The real estate market is picking back up and um, I for one have some very real concern about, um, more and more properties uh, purchased for short-term rental disallowing long-term residents to live. Um, and last but not least, the, we're making lots of progress on our, um, online code portal. Code permitting portal. Uh, in the absence of a code enforcement officer, I've actually been leaning uh, into that process quite a bit more recently with I work. Um, and I've, I've been very impressed with um, with their efficiency and their overall attention to detail. They clearly know what they're doing. They've built an entire, um, company around doing this. Um, very impressive and I'm, I'm excited to get that live on our website the coming month or so. Um, I, I believe if all goes well, once we hire a new, uh, code enforcement officer, they'll be able to walk right in, uh, get trained on the platform and and keep that going. Uh, they'll be able to use that as a tool right away. Um, the other piece of that is, uh, the CAI is the company we are tending to use for the online assessing information. GIS, um, mapping in preparation of that program is being done, uh, now. That's a critical step in being able to transfer that information over to the company to um, create that platform for us. Uh, once that is complete, we get the ball rolling with that, um, you know, we're, we're, we're probably two or three months out from having that live on the website, but having both of those platforms working hand in hand, uh, you know, incorporated into our website will really bring us out of the dark ages and, um, be a huge improvement to the town's operation. Very excited. Uh, that'll conclude my report for this evening. Happy to take any questions, comments, or, uh, sarcastic remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Also comments on the manager's report. Council Bragdon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I want to thank the manager for the column in the paper. I haven't had a chance to read it, but, um, it is in there this week and I'm happy to see that it's in there. Um, I've heard a lot of people commenting on the online code, uh, permitting portal. And I want to reiterate, it's going to hold people accountable and hold the town accountable as well. Um, so it's a give and take scenario. It's, it's going to be fantastic. It's going to make it easier for, for people who are either homebound or for people who do not currently live here or are snowbirds to be able to, you know, do permitting online. Um, so it really is a good thing. So very happy to see that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Bragdon.
Do we have an ETA on completion?
We don't have an exact date. Once we signed that contract, it had to be live on our website within sixty days. I imagine we're three to four weeks away from that date.
Thank you, Council Bragdon. Any other council comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, personally, I'm getting excited to see the, uh, finished product once the dog park is all together. Um, glad to see the sign went up. I did see that the, the dog waste disposal dispenser unit has been placed. I think that's a long description for a very small item, but yeah, that it's, uh, it's been put up. And, uh, I, I think it's getting more and more use is every day. So I, I'm glad to see that we finally pulled the trigger on it. Kudos to the manager for getting that through. Uh, we will be having I will be having discussions, get, yeah, short-term rental ordinance, uh, the final draft, uh, done and get it to planning board so that we can move with that. The manager is all absolutely right. We're getting into the weather and former weather is the time that people seem to want to start developing these, uh, properties for short-term rentals and need to get control of it. So that will be coming hopefully within the next uh, we also will be looking at a few other things that will be coming to fruition within the next month, month and a half, as far as other projects that economic development sustainability working on or has been working. Mr. Manager, I don't think I've ever seen a, a, a town manager in town of Millinocket has a, uh, own web show in, uh, Mudwater with Pete. Now you get columns, newspaper. Uh, it's, it's only a matter of time before basically we start putting you on every social media platform forward. You have become the face of the town of Millinocket. Congratulations. Um.
That would be like popping, right?
Yeah. I mean, for, for a council in, in a, in a, in a community that has, has stressed so many times that they want the manager more involved in the community, there's not much more involvement other than just going down the street, shaking hands and kissing babies. So that could be any more involved than you have been with the, and will be continuing to I think you, in that sense, filled any expectation that the council had on your hiring to do the job and do it well. Congratulations to you. And thank you for putting yourself out there on so many different levels, so many different areas of, uh, social media. Um, there was one more thing here. Oh, the, uh, the other part of this is the, uh, we will still have, even though we are going to computerize and everything else and have this, uh, permitting portal all set up and everything else. I cannot stress the fact anymore that having a code enforcement officer, that those people who are not computer savvy or not computer literate feel like to put a face, uh, to a permit process or whatever, they'll have somebody to talk to. So I hope that we will, I hope that we'll be able to fill that position relatively soon, uh, so that we can move that forward because summer, uh, much like short-term rentals, summer is the time for building permits and that, so I don't want to see somebody get too overwhelmed right off the bat. So nicely have, give them a little bit of time to be able to sneak their way in. With that, I'll say thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Or remember all the nice comments when his review is coming up.
Yes.
Council Danforth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I would just ask that perhaps the manager or he can defer to the clerk to talk about the upcoming special election. Uh, give some communication around that. Thank you.
Go right ahead. This is the big one. Yeah, we do have to announce, you know, the warden and all the specifics for that a little later in the agenda.
Moving right along.
I will say, can I just, can I jump in for just a second? I, I just, like, like mentioned his enthusiasm to have a code enforcement officer. And I will say that as the the town manager, the vacancy of a code enforcement officer falls on my plate. And luckily we have Chief Malcolm, who has had some freed up time in his work schedule. So he is assisting in any of the research and preparation of that and preparing anything for me. Uh, in the meantime, so that if there's something to be signed off on, I am. So between the two of us, we completely support the encouragement of filling that position because it is an entire workload on top of both of
Um, I agree with, uh, just about everything Council Dorr said, so, um, especially on the short-term rental ordinance. I'll be very happy to see that come to fruition. And I'd like to thank Council Dorr for, for taking the torch that was passed to him by former Council goalie and take that maybe running with it. So I appreciate that. Um, dog park, I have yet to be there, yet to go there yet. Um, I'd love to take my puppy there. So hopefully, uh, she's not too happy to see other puppies. Um. Thank you very much for getting the manager's column in the newspaper. I think a lot of people will, especially people that are not on, online, will very much appreciate that column once a month. And I agree with, uh, with what Council Dorr said. I'll just leave it with that. Any other council comment? Seeing none, down to the public on the manager's report. Seeing none, anybody via Zoom, seeing none. All right. Moving past. Order number one twenty-four dash twenty twenty-three. Council Pelletier, would you please read?
Order one twenty-four dash twenty twenty-three, providing for execution of the town warrant for May eleventh, twenty twenty-three. It is ordered, the town warrant for May eleventh, twenty twenty-three in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, two hundred forty-five dollars and five cents. It's hereby approved.
Second, motion made by Council Pelletier, second by Council Bragdon. Council Pelletier, would you tell us the heavy hitters?
Certainly, we have twenty-two hundred to Carol Elton Uella Airport Building Design. Four thousand nine hundred and two dollars, twenty-six cents for Dead River. Seven thousand, three hundred fifty-one dollars, ninety-one cents for Elon Financial Services. That's a credit card balance. Uh, thirty-eight thousand, hundred forty-six dollars, seventy-nine cents from Maine Water Company. Eight thousand, one hundred thirty-four dollars, fourteen cents for Municipal Review Committee Waste Transfer and Tipping Fees. Three thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars, eighty cents for New England Salt Company. Twelve thousand, five hundred ninety-five dollars, thirty-eight cents for Stryker Flex Financial. That's the Hamilton structure.
Thank you very much. Any other council discussion on the order? Seeing none, down to the public. The Zoom, seeing none. Mr. Campbell.
Jeff Campbell, Airport Manager. Um, Carol Newell's bill for twenty-two hundred dollars is not for building construction. That is for, um, an independent fee estimate for the runway one-one-two-nine reconstruction grant. Uh, the design grant. So we had to have an independent fee estimate, uh, to coordinate with our consultant. So that's what that's for. It's a reimbursable item. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Care Bill for that clarification. Any other public discussion on the order? Seeing none, back to the council. All those in favor, six zero. Order number one twenty-five dash twenty twenty-three. Council Bragdon, would you please read?
Order number one twenty-five dash twenty twenty-three, providing for execution of the wastewater warrant for May eleventh, twenty twenty-three. It is ordered that the wastewater warrant for May eleventh, twenty twenty-three in the amount of seventeen thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and ninety-nine cents hereby approved.
Second, motion made by Council Bragdon, second by Council Dorr. Council Bragdon, heavy hitters, please.
Uh, one thousand fifty dollars, fifty-two dollars and ninety-seven cents to creative digital imaging. Uh, three thousand, four hundred four dollars and ten cents to Maine Water, eight thousand to Millinocket, and that's it.
Thank you. Any council discussion on the order? Seeing none, down to the public. Via Zoom, seeing none, back to the council. All those in favor, six zero. Order number one twenty-six dash twenty twenty-three. Council Higgins, would you please read?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Order number one twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, providing for date, time, place. Warden for special municipal election, FY twenty and FY twenty-four school budget validation referendum. It is ordered that the special municipal election and FY twenty-four school budget validation referendum will be held on Tuesday, May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, from eight AM to eight PM at the Sterns High School Gymnasium. And it is further ordered that Diana M. Lakeman will be warden of said election.
Second.
Motion made by Council Higgins, seconded by Council Bragdon. Council discussion on the order. Council Dorr?
Council Danforth.
Council Danforth, all right.
Yeah, I, I just want to thank, um, our clerk for pulling this off to be able to have both elections at, at the same, on the same day instead of having to two different dates. So thank you for your hard, your hard work to make that happen.
Like to thank, um, Council Danforth and Council and, uh, and the town clerk. Any other council comment? Council Dorr.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to, uh, for the people listening, I don't think I've ever seen, in the case of the municipal election, I don't think I've ever seen a more diverse group of candidates, four candidates that are running for the, uh, vacated seat of, of Councilor Goli. And I encourage people to come out and vote and support their candidate. Uh, I, I, the idea that, you know, sometimes that, well, they're all the same and everything else. You, you're not going to find a more spectrum, cross-spectrum, uh, group of people as we have this time. Gilda Stratton, Jim Bisk, uh, Richard Angotti and Tammy McGowan. Uh, I think the town is very fortunate this time to have such a, a, a interesting group of people. And I think any one of them would be a fine addition to the council. So please get out, support your candidate. And, uh, I'd like to see some numbers on this, uh, this election for the municipal seat. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Dorr. Council Bragdon.
Yeah, I want to thank the candidates that are running because without them, we wouldn't be having this. And, and I appreciate the, the time and effort that they're willing to put in to do this because for the last two and a half years, this has been a very, very tough job. And I'm, I'm very appreciative of, of the position that I'm in. Um, and anybody who runs for the seat. So thank you to the candidates. And if I'm not mistaken, there is a candidate's night coming up. I saw the date on Facebook. I'm not sure where it was on, uh, Millinock Memorial Library page, if anybody is interested.
I'm gonna pull that up and verify.
Virtual, I believe.
I, I know that they, uh, have posted statement videos from each candidate. I was not familiar with the, with an actual event. Yes, yeah, it is a, uh, there's a page that's been created on the Millinock Memorial Library's website. Um, and then the, the link is shared currently on our Facebook page and on the, um, the library's Facebook page. Uh, and then we'll, we'll try to incorporate them on our YouTube channel as well. Uh, we may even be able to get them on CAT TV, um, send them, send them over to that crew. So there, there will not be an, um, an official event. However, they have answered a series of questions on video and those responses have been posted, are available for all in the community to watch, uh, to base their votes upon.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
I'd also like to point out that this, speaking of this election being both special election for a seat on the council and the approval of, um, the school budget by the community. This is the year in pattern where the question of whether or not to continue that vote of the community, uh, comes up. That happens every three years. Uh, this is the third year. That question will be on that ballot as well, whether or not the community wants to continue, uh, moving that budget. You know, there was discussion this past year about, um, the cost associated for the town to establish an election like that and to run an election like that, um, with a population of forty-two hundred people and less than two hundred people showing up to actually participate in that vote. Um, that is a, a difficult pill to swallow. Um, that is a a difficult pill to swallow for some. Uh, so we just want those to be as educated as you can on the process. And that um that question of whether or not to continue. Public vote of approval for that budget will be on this. Um, this ballot on the twenty third as well. So please consider that.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any other council comment? Seeing none down to the public. Also seeing none back to the council, all those in favor. Six zero. Order number one twenty seven dash twenty twenty three, Council Danforth, would you please read?
Yes, order number one twenty seven dash twenty twenty three, providing for processing absentee ballots for the May twenty third, twenty twenty three, special municipal election and fiscal year twenty four school budget validation referendum. Whereas Title twenty one dash A M R S A section seven, five, nine um dot seven allows the election warden to process absentee absentee ballots while the polls are open. And whereas processing such ballots will assist the election clerk. And result in an expedited process after the polls are closed, and whereas expediting the process after the polls are closed will result in some savings to the town of Millenocket. Now therefore, it be ordered that the election warden is authorized to process absentee ballots at nine AM, eleven AM, two PM. And six PM during the special municipal and fiscal year twenty four school budget validation referendum elections on May twenty third, twenty twenty three.
Motion made by Councilor Danforth, seconded by Council Higgins, council discussion on the order. Seeing none down to the public. Via Zoom, also seeing none. All those in favor. Six zero. Order number one twenty eight dash twenty twenty three, Council Madore, would you please read?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order number one twenty eight dash twenty twenty three, providing for office hours for the registrar for the twenty third, May twenty third. Twenty twenty three, special municipal election and FY twenty four school budget validation referendum election. Whereas Title twenty one dash A M R S A section one, two, two subsection six specifies that the process. That the registrar must follow in registering voters, and whereas the town clerk also serves as the registrar, and whereas the town clerk has regular hours. On four business days before the election day to register voters, and whereas being open evening hours as required by law to receive voter registration. Will be an added cost to the municipality. Now therefore, it is ordered, it is not necessary that the registrar be open to accept voter registrations. For two hours in the evenings between five PM and nine PM on at least three days before the election day.
Second.
Motion made by Council Madore, seconded by Council Bragden, council discussion on the order. Council Danforth.
Yeah, actually, Mr. Chairman, I should have asked this question on the previous order. Um, as far as absentee absentee ballots, when will they be available for our voters? Can we?
They are ready to vote for our.
Thank you, clearly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Danforth. Thank you, Town Clerk. Thank you for that additional information. Any other council discussion? Seeing none down to the public. Via Zoom, also seeing none back to the council, all those in favor, six zero. Order number one twenty nine dash twenty twenty three, Council Higgins, would you please read?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Order number one twenty nine, twenty twenty three, providing for approval of an application for particular license for Baby Ruth's. Ruthies Takeout and Snacks Bar. It's ordered that the attached application for particular license is hereby approved for Jennifer. Oldman Business Address one. Sorry, one ninety Penobscot Avenue, Millenocket, doing business as Baby Ruthies Takeout and Snack Bar, one ninety Penobscot Avenue, Millenocket.
Second.
Motion made by Council Higgins, seconded by Council Madore, council discussion on the order, Council Madore.
I please would ask eh the council to please pass this one along. This is, this is one of my favorite times of the years when Baby Ruthies opens up, and I would like to see this process continue along. They do such a wonderful job, and I'm so happy that they're back open again. Thank you.
Council Madore, I will also add that I'm a fan of Baby Ruthies. I think they have the best tenderloin lambs going. So uh they strongly endorse this. Any other council comment? Steal any thunder? Down to the public. Seeing none via Zoom, also seeing none back to the council, all those in favor, six zero. Order number one thirty dash twenty twenty three, Council Danforth, would you please read?
Yes, order number one thirty dash twenty twenty three, providing for approval of application for a victual license for Dunkin' Donuts. It is ordered that the attached application for a victual license is hereby approved for Michael We Met. Drew L L Drew Co LLC Business Address one thirty two Riverside Bristol, Connecticut, doing business as Dunkin' Donuts, seven nineteen Central Street, Millenocket.
Second.
Motion made by Council Danforth, seconded by Council Madore. Any other council comment? Seeing none down to the public. Via Zoom, also seeing none back to the council. All those in favor. Five, all those opposed, zero, all those abstaining, one. I was in fear that if I voted no on that, I would never be elected again. There's a lot of Dunkin' Donuts fans out there. All right. Order number one thirty one dash twenty twenty three, approval of application, Council Bragden, would you please read?
Order number one thirty one dash twenty twenty three, providing for approval of an application for a victual license for FFC Subway LLC. It is ordered that the attached application for a victual license is hereby approved for Bruce McLean, Business Address eight oh five Central Street, doing business as FSC Subway. LLC eight oh five Central Street, Street, Millenocket.
Second.
Motion made by Council Bragden, seconded by Council Danforth, council discussion on the order. Seeing none down to the public. Also seeing none back to the council, all those in favor. All those opposed, all those abstained, five zero one. Order number one thirty two dash twenty twenty three, Council Madore, would you please read?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order one thirty two dash twenty twenty three, providing for approval of an application for a victual's license for FSC application, uh Appalachian Trail Cafe. Is or the attached application for a victual's license hereby approved for the Amalkum Business Address two ten Penobscot Avenue, doing business as the Appalachian Trail Cafe, two ten Penobscot Avenue, Millenocket.
Second.
Motion made by Council Madore, seconded by Council Danforth, council discussion on the order. Being none down to the public. Also seeing none via Zoom, back to the council, all those in favor. Six zero. Order number one thirty three dash twenty twenty three, Council Pelletier, would you please read?
Order number one, one thirty three dash twenty twenty three, providing for approval and an application for entertainment license. For Angelo the Grill. It is ordered that the attached application for entertainment license hereby approved for William Morgan, doing business address one eight Penobscot Avenue, Millenocket, doing business as Angelo's Pizza Grill. Twenty, no, Penobscot Avenue, Millenocket.
Second.
Motion made by Council Pelletier, seconded by Council Madore, council discussion on the order. Seeing none down to the public. Also seeing none via Zoom, back to the council, all those in favor, six zero. Order number one thirty four dash twenty twenty three, would I please have Council Higgins read it?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Order number one thirty four, twenty twenty three, provided for approval. Of an application for malt vineyards and spirit drinks liquor license for Highlands Tavern. It is ordered that the attached application for malt vineyards, spirit drinks liquor license is hereby approved for William Morgan Junior Business Address eighteen Penobscot Avenue, Millenocket. Doing business as Angelo's Pizza Grill. Twenty eighteen Penobscot Avenue, Millenocket.
Second. Bring it up.
Council Bragden.
Just a question of clarity. Um, on the uh the packet agenda list we got, it says that order number one thirty four is a liquor license for Angelo's Pizza Grill. Um, I'm assuming that that's a mistake. That's what, so the order is for Highland Taverns, but on the agenda, it says that it's for Angelo's.
So the. So. Let the record reflect on the order is not supposed to read Highlands Tavern. It's. It's supposed to read Angelo's Pizza Grill. Thank you, Council Bragden. So um as a motion, we have a second?
Yes, sir.
Seconded by Council Madore. Council discussion. Seeing none down to the public. Via Zoom, seeing none back to council, all those in favor, and six zero. We didn't amend it, we just. Order number one thirty five dash twenty twenty three, Council Danforth, would you please read?
Order number one thirty five dash twenty twenty three, providing for approval to expend from the events committee budget. Whereas events committee will host a Fourth of July celebration and will purchase thirty posters, eleven by seventeen, to be placed throughout town and the region to be to encourage attendance. Is therefore that the Millenocket Town Council approves the expenditure of fifty dollars from the events committee budget for twenty twenty three, Fourth of July celebration posters out of account. Number E one, one, zero, six, dash, seven, oh, one, two, leaving a remaining balance of five thousand, four hundred and thirty two dollars.
Second.
Motion made by Council Higgins, I mean, motion made by Council Danforth, seconded by Council Higgins. Uh, council discussion on the order, Council Danforth.
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman, um, I am in favor of this order, but I would like to see a different process whereby a fifty dollar expenditure does not need to come to the council that the manager has. Authority for uh expenses like that. So I don't know if it's in the next meeting, uh we have an order. That we need to take care of this sort of business. Seems like small expenditures like this should be at the discretion of the of the manager.
I brought this up at the beginning of the fiscal year and uh. Should be, well, actually, at the beginning of, when we were all newly elected and uh they didn't get any tread, so I'm sure a policy can be drafted and then brought to the next council meeting if if you'd like.
I would like that.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
I I'm going to, again, just make the point. The events committee, the event spending line in our budget is approved. Spending when the budget approved. There's nothing. That specifically states that the spending of that committee needs to come in form of order. Uh, it's already approved and already budgeted expenses, just like any other line in the budget. Um, and what I would propose in is that. Those expenses are able to be made. And that that committee provides an update. Um, at the following meeting, much like the policy that I'll be putting forward soon about that um advertising and donation line that we discussed during the budget process. Um, and I may suggest that there's a tier to that. Maybe it's over. Uh, maybe it's over five hundred, or maybe it's over a thousand dollars that uh from that committee that comes. Into the form of a council order, but um I just, I just think this is a really unnecessary process.
I agree with you. Any other council comment?
Can I just follow up? So um. That's gonna be great. So we just created a a new line for the farmer's market. So how can we handle that going forward, knowing that we're gonna have? We've got some revenue coming in, but we're gonna have some expenses. So how? Would that work the same way? That's a brand, like it's, it's a brand new line. I.
I'd have to learn more about that. It it's, it would be a line added after the budget was approved as a revenue line. So I would have to understand that better before I made a recommendation on it. I could certainly research it and come back in a couple of years.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Council Danforth. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any other council comment? Seeing none down to the public. Via Zoom, also seeing none back to the council, all those in favor, six zero. Order number one thirty six dash twenty twenty three, Council Madore, would you please read?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order one thirty six dash twenty twenty three, providing for the authorization to sign amendment to the intercreditor agreement with our of our Katan. Whereas the town of Millenocket is currently included on an intercreditor agreement for our Katan with the main rural development authority, and whereas. Our Katan is currently seeking additional loan funding related to brownfield cleanup at One North, causing a need to update the bank's intercreditor agreement. It is ordered that the Millenocket Town Council authorize the town manager to sign all necessary documents related.
Second.
Thank you, Council Danforth. Motion made by Council Madore, seconded by Council Danforth, council discussion on the order. Seeing none down to the public. Via Zoom, also seeing none, all those in favor. Six zero. One thirty seven dash twenty twenty three, Council Bragden, would you please read?
Order number one thirty seven dash twenty twenty three, providing for authorization to sign FAA reconstruction design grant application, whereas the Melonocke Municipal Airport. Has the opportunity to apply for and receive grant funding for Federal Aviation Administration in the amount of four hundred and twenty one thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. For the design permitting and bid of the reconstruction of runway one, one, two, nine. It is ordered that the Melonocke Town Council authorize the town manager to sign all related documents for submission of this application. No, this is a fami, this is familiar practice with town of Melonocke. If awarded. The town and the main department of transportation would each have a match obligation of five percent, which is twenty one thousand, eighty four dollars and zero cents. We anticipate this would be a fa, be factored into the fiscal year twenty five municipal budget.
Second.
Motion made by Council Bragden, seconded by Council Madore, council discussion on the order. Seeing none, yes.
I it, I see that the airport manager is here. So this is, this is for the design and uh. Upgrade of uh permitting bid for reconstruction of one of our two runways. This is not the, not the cross runway that's in question as far as being uh taken out of the equation.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Anything to add, Mr. Campbell?
No, I don't. He's correct. This is for the main runway, one, one, two, nine, and it's for the design and reconstruction in kind, meaning the same size that it is now, no reduction in size.
Thank you very much. Any other council discussion? Seeing none down to the public. Via Zoom, also seeing none back to the council, all those in favor, six zero. Order number one thirty eight dash twenty twenty three, Council Pelletier, would you please read?
Second.
Motion made by Council Pelletier, seconded by Council Madore, council discussion on the order. Council Bragden.
Uh, just out of curiosity, what was the uh the bid amount?
Uh, it's not necessarily an amount um to service. I, Jeff, can you expand off that?
Jeff Campbell, airport manager. Um, no, that's, that's just a contract for their work. Um, they bill us as it goes along, and then those items are reimbursed at ninety percent.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Miss Manager. Thank you, Airport Director. Any other council comment? Seeing none down to the public. Via Zoom, back to the council, all those in favor, six zero. Order number one thirty nine dash twenty twenty three, Council Higgins, would you please read?
Order one thirty nine, twenty twenty three, providing for approval of Millenocket Events Committee Scholarship recipients, whereas the town of Millenocket. Thank you. Where is the town of Millenocket? Events Committee established scholarships in twenty twenty-three, this scholarship will award two. Friends high school students and the senior class to exemplify community service involvement and dedication to Millinocket. Whereas the town of Millinocket Events Committee has elected Jack Morris and Sydney Campbell to each receive a scholarship in the amount of five hundred dollars. Five hundred dollars is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council approves these five hundred dollar scholarships to be awarded to Jack Morris. And Sydney Campbell by the Millinocket School Department.
Second.
Motion made by Council Higgins, seconded by Council Bragden. Council discussion on the order, Council Madore.
Yeah, these will be the first annual, I believe, of these awards. And I can't honestly tell you that I could think of two finer students to receive them. Uh Jack has been a uh. Involved in community and has been an exemplary student, student athlete. Uh and Sidney Campbell, again, another one. Who has gone above and beyond in her volunteer work, also an exemplary student. And an asset to the community, so I congratulate both of them and I'm glad that they are getting a chance to receive the inaugural scholarship from the city, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Council Madore, any other council comment, Council Bragden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um this is a long time coming, I remember when this idea first came up in the events committee and. Um I want to thank Bissell Brothers for the donation of uh two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to go towards these scholarships um with without them, this wouldn't, this would not be a thing or it would. Have been extended further, so I I really appreciate everything that Bissell Brothers has done for us um to to help us with these scholarships, thank you.
Thank you, Council Bragden, any other council comment? I have a small comment, um I'd like to congratulate Jack Morris and Sidney Campbell myself, I would also um like to see. A resolve uh to go along with this, I think um that's. That would be appropriate um for the next town council meeting and we can invite them and their families. To uh receive that resolve, I think that is a very proud moment that they um that they would enjoy, so if we can make that happen, Mr. Manager. And um send an invitation out to them, I'm part of the events committee and I'm awful proud to say that. That this is a an honorable thing that the committee does, so um thank you to all that were involved. With the process, I think there were four candidates. And so there is a filtering process, so I hope this encourages more uh school age children, seniors to be involved in their community. And do service work, it does get rewarded, so um down to the public. Via Zoom. Also seeing none back to the council, all those in favor. Six zero. Order number one forty dash twenty twenty-three, Council Danforth, would you please read?
Yes, order number one forty dash twenty twenty-three, providing for establishment or. Of a vendor application for events held by the town of Millinocket, whereas the Millinocket Events Committee recommends the Millinocket Town Council adopt this formal application for vending at town sponsored events. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council approves the attached vendor application developed by the town and Millinocket Events Committee.
Second.
Motion made by Council Danforth, seconded by Council Madore, council discussion on the order.
Yeah, um yes, Mr. Chairman, at first, when I read this, I was concerned because we just created a vendor application and vendor fee for the farmer's market. Um but the more I thought about it and that I read through it, this we're not comparing apples to apples, it's apples to oranges because the. Farmer and artisan market is the event, whereas this vendor form is um for events that the town. Yeah, well, maybe it's not as clear, maybe I need some more ex explanation, but um vendors are welcome to come to events that the town puts on like Fourth of July, so um. Perhaps they they are two separate things, I I was able to figure that out after, but but first it was confusing to me that we had duplicate um processes. I welcome anybody from the events committee to to speak on this as well.
Tom, do you have anything to add?
Tom Mel- Tom Malcolm, co-chair of the events committee. We'd we developed that to use for special events such as Fourth of July or food vendors that we have coming, not not so much for. The. Peddlers like, thank you, the not the peddlers that would be doing that kind of food, it's more for actual food vendors. That's what that's all. That's what that was kind of rolled into, you look at it.
Madam Clerk, would you like to clarify?
Yes, that would be for by my understanding. Is that it is for any event that the town events committee holds. Now, should that be a summer music series, should that be um a specific food truck? Um event on our main street um or or any event of that nature, um this. The vendor application would. One uh would suffice for all of those um opportunity.
So in short, it's going to be a standard application that can be used for many events hosted by the events committee.
Correct.
That provides. Thank you. I agree. Council Bragden.
So twenty-five dollars and a hundred dollars that are paid, is this gonna go to the events committee budget or how does that work?
I believe it states that uh.
So it goes to the revenues budget line for the events committee?
So.
It's not, it's not stated, that's why I'm asking.
The intent is to help the committee to build up the budget, further offer more events and support for other events throughout the year. It's in February thirteenth minutes.
Okay, yep. Uh personally, I understand why. The the need for wanting to build uh the events committee budget, however, personally, I don't agree with it. The the food truck one, I understand because the food, the the need for power and I know power costs so much money and and everything, but. Last year when we, when I reached out to certain vendors, there were vendors that only wanted to come if it was free and we did not have that many vendors last year. Um I'm concerned that this may restrict people from coming and having recently started revamping. The uh the events that we're doing in town, I think this is gonna put a damper on it, especially with the way things are going with the economy, I'm just afraid that. It's gonna restrict things as it stands right now, I agree with it, maybe future down the line, but uh. Coming recently out of COVID, the way that the economy is right now, I I think this is really gonna damper people wanting to come up here if there's a charge, personally, I disagree with it, thank you.
Thank you, Council Bragden, any other council comment, Council Danforth?
I guess I I too um. After hearing what uh Council Bragden has said, I'm just, I guess I'm not ready to make a decision and I'm still unclear a little bit, um. So I'm not ready to to vote on this, so I I would move that.
Are you making a motion?
I would make a motion that we table it.
Second.
There's been a motion to table and it's been seconded. By which in favor? Six zero. The next council meeting?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is the events committee meeting before then? Does this have to go back to the, so they are meeting before then, okay?
On Monday, right? Four o'clock?
I would encourage counselors with uncertainties around that to attend that meeting to um be informed of. The intent and the conversation that's been happening for quite some time.
Thank you. Um and if they can't attend, they are broadcast, correct?
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, reports and communications. Warrant committee for May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, council meeting will be Council Danforth and Chair DuMay. Before I get to the chair committee reports, are there any communications by any council, thank you, Council Bragden?
Uh a couple of meetings ago, I had I had asked about possibly setting up either a special meeting. With Brookfield or having them come to a town council meeting, I I know that we have a policy that's supposed to be fifteen minutes and. I'm afraid it may spill over that if if we invite them and people of the public have shown interest in hearing about. Uh the recent changes that we've we've had with them, I think it's pertinent that we have this meeting and again, the public has stressed that they want to hear about it. Um and personally, I do too, I I again would ask that we invite them to a meeting with us so we can have these discussion with the public present.
Thank you, Council Bragden, any other coun- council comment or communication? All right, we'll move to the chair committee reports, are there any committee chairmans with any reports, Council Pelletier?
Yes, so the uh next charter review committee is on uh. A seventeenth at uh four thirty to six thirty in the manager's office. Uh I know there's not much interest from the public on this dry stuff because nobody comes on Zoom. And uh we did have one item that might spur some interest, uh we table item C six, C two oh one. Membership election terms and the discussion was around entertaining term limits, so if you have any input on that. So attack.
Thank you very much, Council Pelletier, and I do also want to thank you and your committee for doing that hard work, um. Council Higgins and also Council Bragden serve on that committee and I know you guys put a lot of hours in uh two hour meetings sometimes, so thank you for that work. Council Bragden.
It's two hour meetings now completely, so and Sandy is also on that committee, so I want to thank her as well. Um want to point out, we're talking about doing a survey as well for this discussion, um which will be going out to the public, so any. Capacity of which you have a comment would be greatly appreciated or even doing the survey.
Thank you, Council Bragden, any other council, Council Danforth?
So I have a question, you just said that you're gonna get public comment about a change to the charter around recommendation, okay, and I just heard you say that. There will be an opportunity for the public to weigh in outside of that meeting next Wednesday, okay, because I I've had some people speak to me and and I want them to be able to. To put their comment in, so there will be a way to do that, thank you. Um and I'll just mention that there's an age friendly meeting Tuesday, May sixteenth, next Tuesday, three o'clock at the library and by Zoom, and that's also posted on town website under committee, thank you.
Also like to thank you, Council Danforth, for leading your committee and I know that you guys put a lot of work in as well and and many hours, um. So and I think, Tom, now that I'm thinking about it, it's it's two Mondays from now, it's not this coming Monday, it's two Mondays from now. So it'll be the Monday before the next council meeting. Yes, so just to clarify that, any other uh chair committee report? Thank you, everybody, uh we're gonna be moving down to the public comment section, you do have two minutes, please identify yourself and your address.
Well, Levitt, three thirty Congress Street. I've had this issue the last couple of years and I think it's time for the town. Start. Safety wise to the to uh doing the the, I talked to the town manager last year, talked to the chief of police. I think it's time that when I take my grandsons for a walk, that them sidewalks are clear. Not potty boats or trailers or everything, you go down Congress Street, you can see it. You go down Penobscot Avenue, you see it, you go down Qatar Avenue, you see it, if you're out walking, you can see everything, big potty boats, trailers and everything. And and to beautify this town, the tree belt should be replanted. And not people parking on them, because you go down up the new development, tree plant, the tree uh belts are pretty good. But you go, you go to Congress Street and that and just uh just the Crandall parking lot now. You look at the people that's picking their kids up, they're going across the bridge and picking it and that. That is flattened that place out just like Highland Avenue and I think it should be considered a priority to finally get these, I know it's hard. But to get these people off the sidewalk, because I don't want to walk in the road with my grandkids. You know, and and it's been a thing going on, just like building up snow, it's the same thing and it's gotta have a priority to it, I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levitt. Any other public comment?
Mr. Chairman, if you would let me on.
Absolutely, Council.
I completely agree with you, Mr. Levitt, um I can't tell you how many times that I've seen children, especially on Qatar Nav near the intersection. Have to go around boats, go have to go around vehicles parked on the sidewalk and cars having to either stop quickly. Or divert the direction um to avoid, you know, causing causing an accident, so I one hundred percent agree with you.
Thank you, Council Bragden, any other public comment? Via Zoom. Seeing none, looking for a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Council Madore, seconded by Council Bragden to adjourn, all those in favor, six zero. Have a good evening.
Yeah, discussion about reestablishing it all in the police department.
Thank you.